Have a call to order. Running.
Running.
So we'll go ahead and do our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States and to the republic.
Does everybody get a chance to look at the agenda? There is none, is there not? So you do have, okay.
Yeah, it's in them.
Okay. So add CD discussion at new business, item C.
Motion to approve as amended.
I would like to also add the bonuses for employees as new business, item D. Anything else? So motion to approve as amended?
Yes, sir.
Second, again, all right, so we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so carried, all right, so we'll go on to our should be at this point, public input. So any public input, podium, two minutes? So move on to approval of the minutes.
I had one there, um, under, uh, D, the Arbor Board, the Goshen Chair. Thank you, that is in a small statement I made, I think it missed not, um, that, uh... Uh, yeah, just under where it says my name halfway through it, says I have one question about the tree tag, and it says I've been out there, but I, I think I said I've not been out there lately, so it just seems to be not been out there. I have not been out there.
Okay.
Right here. You know, I've not been out there. I haven't been out there, that's why I was getting confirmation.
Under, uh, D, new city business. If we ever came to agreement with all this resigning, or...
No, he is resigning, and so there is a, Matt Dickut has agreed to fill that vacancy, and so we will look to have him start in January, so that'll be brought to you guys as a resolution in January. And then, uh, my understanding is Liz is going to step up to be the chairman of the, the planning commission for a year, and then, uh, the, the plan would be for, um, Lauren Schaffford to take that next year after that as chairman, so that's kind of what they've talked about, so I don't have hundred percent confirmation from them yet, but that's the, that's the tentative plan, is what I've been told.
Yeah, so... You don't have a vacancy, you don't have a vacancy in December?
So there will be a vacancy that will be filled in January. Yeah, not December.
Finishing.
He's finishing his term, yes.
So minutes for five.
Yeah. Better, motion in the second, any public comment before we vote? All right, all those in favor? All right, so carried? All right, so we can go on to... Do you report? So I will have to get the financial report later, I don't have it with me, because Shana is ill, and so she's at home, she's supposed to text me, so, sorry. So if we can circle back to that. Um, reports, the police department report, Chief Travis.
For the month of November, we had a hundred and seventy-eight calls for service. We had thirty-five total charges, four criminal, one PCS, two warrants, thirty moving citations, yeah, thirty moving citations, two DWIs, and ninety criminal citations. Any questions?
I just like the first one, thank you chief, I got my identity stolen. Fraud and Travis, carry it, ten minutes. Or try to take care of it.
Try to, yeah, they weren't cooperating very well, were they?
So thanks.
So for November, uh, at the city park, uh, trim trees at the park south entrance, planted seventeen trees at city hall with volunteers through Arbor Board, cleaned up the slope at the park south entrance, pulled that dead trees near the chicken house park, on roads, cleaned up gravel from fire tower and Wyman, added, uh, and spread gravel, uh, made runoff ditches on Spring Park Lane, used the box blade on New York Lane, after recent storms with the wash you, installed street signs, and if you guys haven't noticed, they've been trying to install one every day because they have to dig those, love them by hand, uh, and then concrete those down, so it takes a while, and then patched the roof at city hall, so the future projects continue installing street signs all over the streets. This is kind of the stuff that was...
Yeah, Russell. Is that by the new landowners, the south entrance car?
Yeah.
Washed out.
It was, yeah, it's because we had gravel, the Tomlinson had come and done the gravel, was planning on doing the asphalt, but because Russell and constructions moving such heavy equipment in there, we delayed that, because the, the thought is, is that this couldn't tear up the asphalt, which I agree, I agree that that's...
I mean, that's, that's my question, it looks like it's always...
Yeah, so they did, they did move all that gravel back to the actual triangle, but it did wash out through there, yeah, and this is the, if you guys haven't been down to that south entrance, that area that they cleaned out, looks really, I hadn't actually been down there until this weekend, and it looks really good, thankfully not a lot of that brush there. So, and then this was the trees, if you guys haven't seen back there, seventeen trees back there that we planned for, and we had a big group of volunteers, it was nice. Questions?
That was done because you had to use that money.
Part of it, yeah, so we needed to be able to, to use the money and to plant the trees.
That's fine.
As part of our, you know, our report commitment.
Because that was... But again.
Yep, we don't have to, but it's, we try to use the money that's allocated for that, so if we don't carry it over, or don't use the, you know... Ocean Fire District. In your report, it's like from November, there were, I think, a little, uh, thirty, yeah, thirty-nine incidences and twelve different types, so a little bit lower than men's team, so again, medical being the highest, forty-eight percent. And brush fires, I think that was left over kind of from that dry spell that we had. Any questions about that? So we'll move on to the planning mission report. If we can go back to the, uh, financial report, I'm going to do that to you guys now, so the general fund is out to eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred ninety-two twenty-nine, the street fund, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirteen dollars, the CDs is a one million, forty-one thousand, uh, four hundred and eighty-three.
Sorry.
So a motion in the second to approve the financial report, any public comment before we vote? All right, all those in there?
Aye.
All right, so carried? So planning commission report, um, really not much, there was two hundred dollars of fees collected, and that was for, uh, the property line adjustment, it was approved, I think that was an administrative approval because they met all the requirements as well. Any questions about it? And they did not meet, um, in December because of the lack of form, right?
Yeah.
All right, building inspection report, JD's here.
Pretty straightforward.
Perfect. I think there were, there were no fails, it was all, everything passed.
There was about twenty things that passed.
Yeah.
Finals insulation, driveway eight one.
And again, that may slow down, it always slows down the winter anyways, but we may slow down significantly next year because of the whole lack of light.
Tommy Bell.
All right, well, let me see if I can...
Like they said, Brian.
Installing update. That's nice. Last time we couldn't get the password to come up, this time it's updated.
Trying to get the Arbor Board.
Yeah. Oh, I have it here, but I just wanted to do it. Um, is someone here to present the Arbor Board, or is it going to be just us reading through it? Through it, so Arbor Board members, um, assisted in planting the sixteen trees behind Goshen City Hall, and we've got plenty of seventeen, it's meant to be the number... Holly, so you have to have, I didn't know, a male Holly and a female Holly go on berries, anybody know that?
Yes.
I didn't know that, so... We originally got two female Hollies and no male Holly, so we went back and got a, a male Holly, so, uh, Mary Smith, uh, sorry, Mike and Cheryl Nemo continued to clear the, uh, and stack overgrowth around the springhouse, I had not actually been there until this weekend, it looks awesome, it looks really great, so thank you guys for doing that, uh, Mary Smith represented Arbor Board in helping the, uh, AR Bugs Insect Festival for thirty-five hundred preschool and elementary students, partnership with the UVA entomology department, and it was an amazing day for various insects and live presentations that have rolled, uh, out of our lives, it included costumes, microscopes, live snakes, spiders, nematodes, and a variety of scientists, the Goshen Arbor Board Education, uh, Mary Smith and Kim Watson prepared, uh, four presentations at the Fayetteville Public School, GT Sustainability Conference held at the Fayetteville Library, attended by twelve hundred students, the presentation focused on the importance of trees and protecting water quality by removing excess nutrients, preventing erosion by holding soil with their roots, providing homes for wildlife, uh, being host plants for butterflies and life cycle caterpillars, supporting pollinators, uh, hosting bees, bird, bats, and other, uh, in their cavities and bark, supporting migration of birds and other animals, uh, providing food for humans and wildlife, cooling streams and protecting fish, providing windbreaks, enhancing property values, shedding homes and reducing heat bills, providing timber for homes and other buildings, providing beauty with foliage and flowers, providing shade and recreation for, uh, hundreds and thousands. Any comments or questions? All right, so we'll move on to the parks and recreation.
And not a whole lot going on, like you said, that this, uh, mayor said the springhouse has been cleared up by Mike, thank you very much, it's great, you can actually see the area, it's not snake anymore, uh, there is a fence that's going to be going up in the next month between, uh, Debbie McDonald's house and the south entrance to block that, that should be done in about a month?
About a week.
About a week. Uh, we are not meeting until January, we just don't have enough, nobody's, we don't have enough form to meet in November or December, um, but we are going over the maintenance, everyone turned in, but, um, reports for the, or what their master plan updates were, uh, back in, uh, October, um, so that's been done, um, hopefully that will come around the first of the year, getting, uh, some, I guess, an established plan by then, and then it'll be in front of you guys after we meet with the Arbor Board and everything else, um, and then, uh, the north entrance is done, uh, and the parking lot has been marked, so that's nice with the ADA compliance, compliance with the, uh, uh, disability, uh, spots marked, um, other than that, we hope to be on the twenty-first of January and start the new year.
What type of fence is going in? Soft top?
It's a wooden fence, it's a eight foot by, how many feet is it long?
Hundred and fifty feet long.
Hundred and fifty feet long, I didn't even follow those, but it's a, it's a nice wooden fence, uh, the lateral boards and vertical parts on that post and the upper part in between.
And I, I went and met with, uh, Debbie and Linda to make sure that they were happy with the fence, and to make sure that they were okay with, with the designs, they should, and this was actually the cheaper of any of the other, all, other estimates that we received, so... Sure would be five, I think that's about like pencil.
I'll say something.
By two feet.
I was just going to say, did you...
They wanted, they actually requested it be taller than six, and I told them, and that's one thing that we coming to the planning commission in January, it was supposed to come to where the feet initially assembled, is a change to that ordinance to bring it to eight feet, because six feet is rather low for a lot of people, they can still see right over the top of the fence and in other people's yards, so we're, the plan is to adjust that in the ordinances that we currently have to adjust it to eight feet for everyone.
Is that a privacy fence?
A privacy fence, yeah.
So, was current ordinance allowed?
It does, the current, I mean, we, council has to approve any deviation, but...
I'm fine, I'm, I'm bringing bond, just when I go over. Okay, because we ran into this over...
Yeah.
Arbor Board, like.
Yeah.
We're...
We did? True.
I'll write the last, if there's not a deviation. So I guess the answer is, if we're good with it, we're good with it, it's got to go. I guess, we can't violate our own ordinance, so.
That's right.
We can carry it over till after, as it gets approved, but it'll delay getting it put in, and it'll, if that's a budgeted item that we would have to carry over into next year, that's what we need to do.
We don't have that, so, can.
You can add it to the, the budget, we just have...
You know, it's always for it, but if that's what they want, you can violate.
And I, and I discussed that with them, depth, you know, saying, we don't have approval at this point to actually go against that, but the new ordinances, as they're being written and brought to planning commission, change it, so...
I don't want to set a precedent, you may be the other person, but then...
We did.
Seems like it would increase it six weeks.
Was that we wanted an inclusive community rather than, or, you know, it's just again. While by, although it's on...
Six foot fence, that's like six foot, that's a, and, uh...
So this is the one.
We have to think about, what is the, what is the purpose of the fees, are you, you know, if you're trying to provide privacy, six foot doesn't necessarily be...
Well, that's what I'm... Six feet.
Six foot is the standard, the, I mean, as far as you think about privacy fence across, I mean, you work in communities and cities, six foot is considered still a privacy fence.
Yeah, but most cities don't have a six foot limit. We have, most, most, all cities, most all cities have an eight or a ten foot, so, yeah, that's why I was looked at it and said, you know, I know ours is six, I know the, I thought the rationale was so that we're more inclusive and we can still see your neighbors, but if it's truly for privacy, we don't necessarily want to see your neighbors right next to you, eight feet provides that privacy.
Well, because what, what they're not, people six feet tall.
Yeah, but when you have a six foot fence and you're standing back, it's the over ones, you know?
Would that have been... No, you know, it's, it's, you know, I mean, I think the, the planning commission or the nation league said it, um, actually, what do you recall from that?
It's, it's...
Yeah.
And probably did, uh, uh, over four years.
There was recommendations from the planning division. What's that for businesses as well? Under what businesses?
Like, it's, it's... Right.
What you're saying is he needs to build a two foot firm and then build that six foot fence, probably.
Right, we can do that. Huh? That is an option.
That is. Three foot, a three foot, I never heard.
Then you'll find the same situation that you got down here at Dollar General with the wind blowing ahead.
Next being...
That, there's been a few that have been falling down.
They just probably all three thousand.
So I do want to also update you guys that we did not get our phase two R doc grant that we was filing for, uh, we, I think that one of the main reasons we did not get that is because we had not even started on phase one, so most of the time they won't award that grant as a phase two unless you at least started, and we, we need to completion of the project in its underway, so we haven't even started phase one yet, we did meet with Crafton and Toll today, um, Brian's on the call, to discuss this going forward, the delays that we've had, and basically, I think the only real outcome is that we're holding the count, that this is what our expeditions are, that we're more expeditious in the time.
Do they own that?
Hardly. It's hard.
Well, they named it on it.
We did get...
You know, that...
We did get a little bit of apology for some lack of...
Well, there'll be an opportunity to file.
Oh, yeah, so we get, you get to file for it every year, we'll, we'll file for another grant, it comes in spring, yeah. Now, we didn't know about the R doc grant not being... Arkansas State Park, we presented, we haven't heard back from them yet, so we don't know on the Arkansas State Park grant, uh, but we do know that the R doc grant we did not get, the other grant we did not get was the, uh, vehicle grant for the police officers to get a, a new vehicle paid for by a grant, so we didn't get that grant, but if you look at who got the grants, it was all the big cities.
So, all the small towns applied for, including Greenland, Greenland actually applied for what the grant was for, which was for video surveillance, they, Craigstown applied for cameras in time, and the grant went to Springdale, Fayetteville, Washington County, and Farmington. So, that's who got awarded the money for the grant from our area.
You said, Liam, fence.
Yeah, it's getting...
Yeah, we can, I think we can circle back to that. Yeah, I will, I'll...
It's six feet in max of drive, as far as where you can start measuring, Brian's, I'm trying to say, I don't think it's variance options. And if that's the case.
I thought we did bring that we could have a variance on any of those when we established that about the entrances, I mean, the gated entrances, that we did provide other process by which it could go from.
I don't, I don't think that's ever been up there, I think that's been part of the conversation.
But we never actually passed anything to allow for that?
I don't believe so.
Yeah.
We just got to make, so we can't make somebody cut down what they built in the town or something else they did.
We'll clarify, if we, if we, if we have to, we'll bring it forward to the twenty twenty five, so, and if it needs to go back on the agenda for, you know, us to, to, to do some sort of variance, if it's, if it's allowed, we can bring that in January, so we'll plan on holding on this, so, um, on to the next, uh, item on the agenda, it would be old business under item A, Arbor Board Ordinance, there were some changes that were requested to be made to the Arbor Board Ordinance as it had been written at the last meeting, I think you've already updated all the...
It was revised, yeah.
Yeah.
It was revised.
Thank you.
H.
Something about the easel, Ryan, remove the easel.
Well, no, um, this was about, um, the quorum under meetings, because it says for board members, but that upon fifth, or that, that would be for both ownership, we had seven, um, because if we say above that, the quorum count, based on whether we have five members or six or seven members, and then in that meeting's paragraph, it's... So I don't know if we just need to strike that because we worry address forum in the paragraph above, or if it needs to be amended, but it doesn't fully encompass what we...
Maybe strike a quorum, the justice system will, we'll never do that either. Out of that meetings paragraph, yeah.
And then, so here. The only other thing I noticed is that where we're talking about the exception with the arboretum, um, it just says arboretum instead of arboretum signage.
That was the one that... Yes, that's number three.
Section three.
Yeah, section, yeah, it just says, I'm a bit of arboretum, but that's signage.
Isn't that what you changed, Brian?
Yes.
Right?
It is.
Because I had a call from, from Betty, and so I spoke with her, to Sean, and that's what I wanted to work on, I think, so, what does it read now?
It just says, it's the exception of arboretum, but I think it should say arboretum signage.
Signage. That's the one you changed, right?
Yeah, that's what we had to amend last time.
With those two changes, is there any other, I think those are minor corrections, I think we can...
Yeah, I think that the arboretum one was the only one.
So we're going to add arboretum signage, and we're going to move it under this second page, where it talks about a minimum of four. Yeah, sorry, it's down here.
I'm amazed, I don't...
There it is.
Strike the sentence.
Just strike that, a quorum shall consist of a minimum of four board members, just strike that sentence.
Word for me.
Yeah, because it has to have a majority of both members, right, yeah, okay. Is everybody in agreement? Okay. So with those changes, we want to wave the first and the second readings and...
Motion to... So then rules, wave the first and second readings, and reading by one minute.
On second.
Motion second. Paul Lou.
And what names, can you do them to the role? It's not here, oh, okay, right?
Yes.
Got it on court, Paul Henderson, yes, Max Paul, Paul Martin.
Ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number one twenty-seven and further organizing the city of Goshen, Arkansas's community forestry plan, which addresses the planting, maintenance, and removal of public trees within the city of Goshen in order to promote the benefits of our community, forest resources, and for other purposes.
within the city of Goshen in order to promote the benefits of our community, forest resources, and for other purposes.
Second. Public input before we go. Okay. Uh, we'll call it.
That's right.
Yes.
John Valentine.
Yes.
Paul Anderson.
Yes.
Ted Boyd.
Yes.
Paul Martin.
Yeah. This is time three, I have to time it. To the second item, item B, the ordinance establishing the master plan process, I think is. It's gonna be.
Tables. Yeah. For Sean, I don't know about that.
So.
Table.
All right.
Yeah. So move to table in a second. Any public input before they go? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And ordinance ensuring the master plan adherence. Same thing.
Sorry.
So we haven't moved to table and public input before we vote. Right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, period. And then we'll move on now to the twenty twenty five budget proposal. And have you guys had a chance to review that? And I think if you guys looked at the code coding, you can tell the only thing that was changed from the last time it ended up the. Yep. Questions about any of the items on there?
The only comment I have is, once again, I think it's very well done. The salaries. Budgeted twenty four of those. Spend twenty four to both twenty five, thirteen percent of the rest.
It's actually a, actually, that detail will be first.
Well, just play my commentary, put me in. Sure, I support salaries and people just make the mistake. It looks like to me most of the recent retirement insurance and.
Actually, most of that increase is for the new employee that's budgeted here, Abby.
As one did not add it, went from a part-time position to a full-time position.
Wait, from, um, last page of, of the, in the digital salary and liability in this, um, all apartments projected twenty twenty four was seven hundred eighty one thousand. And then they proposed twenty five is eight hundred eighty three.
Right.
So we're looking at eleven point five five. So increase the next bit, increase the benefits plus taking her with part time. And if we're, you know, that's just within the salary part of it, but if we look at the overall budget, normally we were hitting sixty, sixty-five percent of our total salaries. Now we had fifty five. So we reduced that number down by reallocating money that we spent in other sources for twenty four that we don't need to. So let's bring it down, the overall cost of salaries to the overall revenue picture. So even though it's going up eleven, salaries went down a percentage based on our total revenue fifty five, sixty. So I'll let it be it.
And I have a, I have a question as well. And, uh, we did.
Say the access.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and we, we did do the mayor's salary that we voted on and the top of this. The mayor did the same thing when it's all.
You don't have to do that. That's not required by state statute. We can do that if you.
I, I, let me finish, Brian. And also do not believe that elected officials have to get a raise every single year, especially after the raise the mayor got last year by eight thousand dollars.
I don't think that's correct. It's not correct.
It went from twelve to twenty.
It went from fourteen to twenty.
Uh, six thousand dollars. You know?
Well, I can, on that score, the council approved it, so I think that's.
I, I, we, we approved it, yes.
So where are we talking about it then?
I'm talking about moving forward.
Okay, but the raise is not six thousand dollars going from twenty.
I understand that. I'm just saying, I don't think, I think the the mayor's salary and recorded pressure salary should be based on a set figure for the duration of that term.
Set. Set by who? The council? We need you guys to have done that. That's what we did.
All right.
So.
But now you want us to raise it again.
We had already presented that and that was also conditionally approved by the council. So I still don't walk where you're coming from.
This year's.
In, in November, we were here, in November, this same information was presented to you. We conditionally approved, we're coming back with the same numbers, and it was basically saying the time who stands. That was the discussion.
I don't remember.
Am I the only one remembering that?
And I just, I want to make a statement. Neither last year nor this year did I ask for an increase. I didn't want necessarily an increase. I was told by our finance committee that because of the amount of work that I do, that they felt like it was prudent to put that in for me because of the amount of hours I spend in city hall. I, I don't have a preference. I'll do it whether I get paid or I don't get it all. I don't do this for the money. That was again, this year, they said, the amount of time that you spend at the city, you need to at least have a little bit of an increase like everybody else. But I don't care. I really don't.
Electing positions.
Just because someone's elected doesn't mean that they don't do significant amount of work and that you can adjust their salary based on their work product. If you look at my work product over the last two years, I'd say it's been pretty significant.
City house. And plants and trees with his own equipment.
Find a water place.
One of the many here that we, this discussion was already had by speeding. So if we're going to change, it's going to change simple process. We can start all again. If we want to do that.
I don't remember approving salaries.
I think you're probably the only one that did not, did not because I think I took a poll of the council members. We presented this, we conditionally approved, brought it back tonight. Hopefully they finalized this.
Conditionally approved.
But salary is not an issue. First, that was not, what are we coming back for?
Well.
I mean, John, I'm sorry, I've been misclassification.
But we're having a conversation.
So if you disagree, let's talk about it.
I made my point. I understand. And I imagine the motion that we do not.
Well, I think we need to go over the whole budget, not just this one thing to see if there's other issues you may have.
But I don't have problem with any of them.
Okay. So we, so we have a motion from John to not approve the raises for the elected officials as presented in the budget at this time. Does anybody want to second that? Okay, so without a second, does not move forward, let's go on to the next item.
Um, on the general fund, at the bottom, Kashana did not get a chance to finalize that for you concerning depreciation items for the without ceilings. We have enhanced your financials a little bit more this year, kind of give you a little bit better understanding of the flow for the entire year. Uh, if you go to the back page, you will see, I think hers is calling the pending, um, depreciation figure. That figure that's the bottom of your sheet should be seventy thousand three fifteen. That is not non-cash deduction for assets that we have in terms of at this point in time. EBITDA, which means earnings before enters taxes, depreciation, and motivation, is added back in, so that number comes back. Um, taking this all into account, you will look at on that asset schedule, bottom line, we're showing the city as an asset in excess of three million dollars. That is cost component. That is not financial. Um, part of the things that I would like to do going forward is that we in twenty five approve a appraisal. Uh, because we're getting to the point where we do need to know what assets, what our assets are actually worth, particularly because we have such an increase in valuation of property there. Uh, the land, the buildings. That will help us moving forward with any type of financing that we may want to do in the future if we do an appraisal. I think at this point, we know just if we did not do some type of fair market value of city assets considering we are. So.
Two questions, Siri, that makes brilliant sense. One, um, can't you count land, unimproved land as, as an asset?
You definitely can.
Is that?
Yeah, that is correct. It's not appreciated. It goes up in value. So it's never appreciated, but, uh, with the land value that we have, it, this does not properly reflect what the true value of the city assets are.
Got it. And then we buy the, um, uh, Ranger or whatever, whoever the players, did we buy that this year?
Yes.
So was that on?
That is, that is down on the, down to the twenty fourth section, the twenty twenty four. And you will see that under. I notice that it's small for you guys.
I'd rather land quick question soon.
For the high dollar.
I'll see that here.
Unless, uh.
I'm gonna see, we got the bucket truck, we got.
We got the bucket truck, the tractor, the New Holland tractor, uh, the bucket truck lower thirty nine eight. The international bucket twenty nine, thirteen five.
I was just looking.
The, the D max thirty seven thousand eighty three dollars. It's under the, uh, five year party down toward the center of the bottom page.
Got it. I think.
Okay.
I want to see there.
There it is, there. So it's divided up by class of property.
We're good.
So those, that's, that's the one thing I wanted to bring out to your attention that we, we probably do need to do that from a management standpoint. Uh, just getting a good valuation of a fair market value, since it does not reflect properly. Um, anything else on the, on the profile? If you look, you can have moved that section totally out to give you, separate it out for you. That section there, uh, we are accumulating, um, about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifteen thousand from projects that have been presented. And prior years, that money is being held in the, uh, general fund and restricted until those things are paid for. And that Tomlinson will rational enter final payment, uh, craft and tell fees that are still outstanding. Uh, all of those things will be at twenty five and then the last thing will be sixty three thousand portion of that grant and it has not been paid yet.
Totally.
Exactly.
And so I will tell you that on the Tomlinson, the reason we're not paying that, I contacted Tomlinson and said, would it be okay if we paid you after the first of the year? Because if we pay him this year, it triggers a federal audit because we spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year. And that costs the city ten thousand dollars for a federal audit. Tomlinson was gracious enough to say that would be fine. You can pay us January, you know, first, second, third. So that saves us a big chunk of money for a federal audit. So.
Seven fifty is the.
Is the cutoff for here for, for grant money. If you spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant money in any one fiscal year, you have to have a federal audit.
And the only other thing on here is, is, uh, outstanding operating expenditure was the employee bonuses. We said that's contingency. It is built into the system. Um, we just need to add back in. Now, it's just hanging out there. There is money in the budget for that. Get input it. So if you want to rent it, that's fine. If not, don't mark that. Um, other than that, I think we are going to come in under. And so we're going to be carrying that over no matter what we do. So I think we had a good view.
During the online bill, it was, um, potential power obstruction.
Yes, that is included in the street, but that has been, uh, approved in the streets, as you thought. So.
Well done.
And so any other questions, comments?
I have a question. And we sent in to this man. There's a question of that came from the municipal league about the labor department and the criterias for the and where Texas had struck down and vacated, uh, the new rule.
You can tell they overtime, that, that Texas judge struck down overtime?
Now, that while they, they, they struck down the increase in what the number would be for somebody to be exempt. Okay, um, and it was we set it back to effective date of, uh, established in twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I think I had the gene with overtime. Is that what you're referring to, overtime?
Well, it, it, it is, uh, and, and the criterias that make up whether somebody gets overtime on.
Right. And that was the, that was the case of not been tested, not a nationwide adjustment.
Uh, it's, it's. I don't know. Sean showed you.
So our only exempt employee is Chief Travis. And Chief Travis means all the conditions set by the state of Arkansas is an exempt employee. We, we reviewed that with the municipal before we ever approached.
I'm talking about making him an exempt employee. He's our only exempt employee.
Okay, so she's not exempt. She's salaried. Yeah, she, it's not that she should be. It's whether or not we want to make Kashana an exempt employee. So we, we can because she's a department head, but I don't know that her salary fits the threshold. So it fits the threshold for an exempt employee in the state of Arkansas. We'd have to go back to municipal league and make sure. Because one of those requirements is a salary, I, I don't remember the exact amount, but it's not, I don't know that her salary would meet that requirement.
It does. But that's not the point that I made. We have employees that other than.
There's no other employee that's exempt. Everybody else is, is an hourly employee.
It just says she's salaried.
There, you can still be a salaried employee being paid hourly. That is correct. That is correct. I think you're confusing an exempt salaried employee with a non-exempt salaried employee. So there's labor laws that dictate both of those categories. And then there's categories that you have to be within a certain job title in the state of Arkansas for municipality to be exempt. And really, at this point, the only employee we felt like was truly exempt was Chief Travis. And that's why we made him an exempt employee. We raised his salary significantly to cover for his overages that he may accrue for helping out at times and it goes over the normal forty hours of a work week. In their case, forty two. So.
All I'm saying is that if Sean didn't show you that, then I don't have to bring it out, but.
But this doesn't apply to the state of Arkansas. This is a.
And it texts something.
No.
Texts. I'm not where it is.
It's, it's. All I'm saying is we need to be conscious of what's going on with this, okay, and how we have our employees exempt or non-exempt or salaried or out. exempt or non-exempt or salaried or out.
All of our employees are hourly with the exception of Chief Travis. We may say that it's a salary, but it's an hourly rate that we refer to. They get paid hourly. So all of our employees get paid hourly, that's how they're all set up. We may say that that's our annual salary, but if for whatever reason they weren't able to complete their forty hours a week for the entire year and they didn't take any vacation time, then that salary would be less than what is posted. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they are all hourly employees with the exception, with the exception of Chief Travis.
Maybe the answer is let the council review this decision, see if it impacts going forward.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but we also continue to, we continue to call everything here salaried, okay, on, on a.
That's pretty typical for any budget that you put together. I mean, even at the hospital, we have hourly, I'm an hourly employee, but I have a salary. And that's what's set is my salary, even though I'm an hourly employee. It's, it's, it's been set every job I've ever had as a director, manager, we all have that set as hourly rates that we call salaries, but the employees are hourly.
But they only show it on one.
No, they have an hourly rate. If you calculate their hourly rate, you just take their, their total, you know, pay and divide it out. And I think she has that on the.
Only on one person.
We can add that in there for you to see, but that's what the hourly rate is. If you want to get their hourly, just take their salary and divide it by twenty eighty, so.
Such as we're done.
Well, it's, it is, and she can print that straight from CenterPoint, CenterPoint print set straight out. And I know in talking with Kashana, she is planning on next year within the third month of, of reporting, printing all of the budgetary stuff straight from CenterPoint as we get more unified cohesion as to CenterPoint being the reference point to all of those data keeping points for all of our salaries that automatically calculates.
So, yeah, that document, those, that, that document, you should pick this down if you want to go back. If we did, we're to get an audit, I don't have any concerns with that. Uh, the hours this year was right around, um.
But again, this is going to be review based also, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I just want to make that point, even though we're showing, we're locating.
It is, and so you, we had some employees that, you know, they've got four percent, some employees make up a maximum percentage. I know that we had to do some market adjustments because we had police officers that quite frankly could walk out the door and go get a job making significant amount more than what they make here. Um, and same thing, so, yeah. And I know that we had a couple of administrative staff, Lacey and Kashana, that we had to increase their rate because of the amount of work that they do and the roles that they take on. Um, if we had to replace them, we'd be making a lot more money, so.
Um, we do intend to, office of, and as this going forward in, um, twenty twenty five, you will start seeing actually month activity by month. So you'll see January is a standard all month, it'll be year to date. February is a standard all month, year to date, you can actually see thirty day activities at just one year to date term, they isolate by month where things are happening. It'll actually help you see exactly where we are, you know, what's the income of the low months, where we haven't. Only other thing that's on there, we have brought forward all the December, um, tables, that's where you have a projected seventy one bottom end. But then December, I haven't especially account for that. So, uh, I request that you guys look at this, do you already have, and, and get us approved.
All I, all I ask in the end is.
We could easily put the hourly rate next to the salaries, that's not. On everyone.
Because then there's no confusion.
That, we definitely can do that, that's not, not a problem.
And if you, and if you can do, what that's all about.
Yeah, Brian has that, he's going to review it, bring it back to us. We do, so we have a resolution to adopt the budget as presented. And we can definitely, you know, create that, um, clarification on there just to make sure everybody's aware of what the hourly rate is, but.
You may read the whole thing. Just title it, sir.
I'll second that.
The long one.
So we have a motion in the second, public comment.
I like the fact that you've been show compared to the last month.
Yes, sir.
But also compared to year to date compared to last year.
That will also be there, that will also be there.
And I will tell you for the public here, we do plan on like we did this year, we'll have it on the website as soon as we get everything approved. We'll get it up and loaded so that everybody can just go through the budget, look at every item, so. Do you have another public input?
Yeah, I just had one question, it's, uh, it's not a comment, but, uh, Jerry, uh, you mentioned that the need for the city to have a, uh, an audit, uh, or a, uh,
I mentioned.
A financial. Well, yeah, valuation of all the, uh, city's assets.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, since the city, the City Parkville branch is, um, not, we wouldn't, the city wouldn't be able to sell that property, is my understanding.
That is correct.
Can that be also included in the assets?
Absolutely.
At market value?
Absolutely, okay, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
My God, that's what he gave us, and this is a list of all the assets and depreciations.
Yeah, my question is really more about whether or not, since the city can't sell that property, if it could be valued in the same way.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
Well, I think the other point is any property we do, I don't appreciate it.
Exactly. Yes.
And that, and that, we talked about this, you know, at the finance committee, those things become important if we ever decide that we need a bond issue. So that if we are to send out for a bond issue, they're, they're going to want to know, what is your capital? How much do you have in assets? And, you know, what is, what is the liability they're taking to give us that bond?
Need to have some type of, uh, baseline, show increases over the years. Can't do it, although here we are, it, it needs to be somewhere we have to start with data on value questions. So something that we do need to do to the city, um, or, uh, to be able to keep. Uh, we have appraisals on post. You know, Max, I have not seen one since I've been, uh, engaged with this, so.
I don't need to start.
But those aren't the same as like an actual financial appraisal, that's just an appraisal of the property for purchase.
We're in market, fair market.
So there's a fair market appraisal that you can do for a city to, to be able to have, uh, the knowledge of what is the fair market value of all of your assets. What you're talking about was we had an appraisal done in order to be able to purchase the property. So there, there was an appraisal for the purchase price to make sure that it appraised for enough to be able to do the purchase of the property. So, but as far as an actual like allocation of resources, as far as what we have in assets, we've not had that type of.
We'll do a valuation of everything.
Yes.
If you ever go out to the bond market, they will sell that to those that want to buy those bonds. You gotta have in your backlog, it's what it's worth. That's just we have a whole.
Yeah, we don't, once you have that baseline, you don't have to like start with scratching it. The, the, it's right, right away some things sold here, but we've also done a lot of, uh, improvement properties that have increased value questions that we need to get, get down and, um, as far as community building, they city hall, the, the pro-land improvements, all of those things will be spat, sorry, that was my, for Siri. Agreeing with me. Uh, there's specialized phrases that go to city, uh, appraisal, bad knowledge, sometimes script, that we, um, I'm not going to talk about them, and so once you get the door head, I will go, probably take the lead on finding someone, bring it back to the castle.
I mean, why not go for a bond tomorrow?
No, 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 I just think that if, if we're going to progress in city be planning forward, uh, we need to be thinking years ahead, not just months. So.
There's a tally person.
Yeah, it's something we should probably include sometime in the next, yeah, I agree, thank you.
Alright, so we have the resolution for the, uh, adoption of the twenty twenty five budget.
They're proposing to read it.
Yeah.
So.
So a motion in a second, we've had a public input, any other public input before we vote? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
The resolution adopting two thousand twenty five budget, voting to approve.
Second.
So a motion to approve in a second, any other public comment before we vote? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, take care. Alright, next item, the agenda is going to be the, uh, city business, the resolution appointing the poster board members, and this is something that has to be done every year.
I'll make a motion, uh, that we elect Paula to continue on in that position and to read and tie along for your people and.
Oh, yes, sir.
But do you want to?
They're my quickest meetings. So we have a resolution. We have a motion in a second, yep.
To read this?
Yes. All those in favor?
With Paula's name.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Resolution confirming the appointment of Paula Anderson to municipal deposit board.
A motion in a second to adopt, any public comment before we vote? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so Carrie. Next item is the projects and grants update, um, I've already touched on some of it, um. There really isn't any other, I don't think there's any other information to give you other than we're waiting to hear back from Arkansas State Park. Um, we'll proceed with the, the forestry grant in February probably is when we'll get started on that in South entrance. And as soon as we find out anything, we'll email you if it comes out, it's, it should be out this next week for the Arkansas State Park. So once we hear back, we'll email all the council, let them know whether we got it or not. Ready good with that? And, uh, if, if everybody, if, if you haven't been to the North entrance, it's worth driving over there, it looks great. They, Tomlinson does such a good job, so it just looks really, really wonderful. The, the they've actually come back and it's, it looks better now. So the other thing that we are doing that's not part of the grant, but it's one of the projects we're trying to get completed by the end of the year or early next year is the rock sign that's going in on that, that drive. We contacted R dot again today because in order for us to get that sign in the right way, um, we have to have running water and facilities. Now, they're going to see if, since we're going to have that, because we had a donated, um, water fountain with the dog walk, water fountain that we're going to hook up hopefully by, before the end of the year if we get our meter set. Um, that would count as running water over there, um, and then the porta potty would count as the facilities, they're going to see if they can count that. They're not sure they can, but it's something to just kind of think about as, as far as, we want to try to get that sign closer to the highway. We could put it back forty feet, but it's not quite as visible. Either way, we're going to plan on getting it done, hopefully before the end of the year. And we did pick out the rock and it's at the, uh, monument, uh, place of getting engraved, so they're projecting that they won't have the rock actually engraved until right after the first of the year, but they're going to try to get the base established. So that'll be the Eagle Scout project, getting the base all established for the landscaping before the rock actually goes on.
So what a goal, long-term plan is to be to put slowly.
We have fifty thousand dollars in the parks budget for next year, and part of that, we will have bathrooms by the end of next year somewhere. Absolutely, for two stalls, yeah, I think it will, so.
So what's the story, road now? The original.
So the original road, originally, we were kind of, Tomlinson just demolished that road. The, the landowners that have the, the house across the creek wanted to at least leave it where they could access to go through and go out that gate. So we put a road closed sign on the gates so people don't try to enter there, but they can still go out that gate if they wanted to.
Gets my point, I mean, obviously that had access wrong for the city. What I understand UPS, that it's probably fire trial, I hope fire truck can get up, one, probably. So the question to me is from part, is it okay to them to maintain it, is the city going to do something? Because this is like a creek bed, and I understand it washes out and flood, but I would be surprised if there is big truck access to those, the other houses as well, it's like, you know, you try to come off the highway, that, that white hot driveway is pretty steep.
It is, but I've pulled my, I've pulled my international dump truck with a dozer behind it up that driveway and over into the park, so I know you can access it with a large, heavy piece of. But you can still get a fire truck that, you can still get a fire truck through there. And we've actually maintained that road, the city had, we've trimmed trees through there, trimmed branches, so that you can still go through there. And we do maintain that road, the one that is up the hill we maintained. We've put gravel on it, we've graded it, we've trimmed trees, you can get a fire truck out. We don't maintain that, because that's not, that's not an access road. Yeah.
Said they prefer to come out and follow road because it's coming out from White House. You know, it's, it's a tough thing, especially if you're going back to the right.
But, but nothing's been done to that. I didn't even live and know that it was a road.
Yeah, it's hard.
As he is, I always thought it was the, the storm run off in the stream. I mean, you, you'll never keep that thing.
No, we're, we, we've not agreed to, we, we've not agreed to maintain that as a city. We've allowed the people that live there, they want to traverse across there, just continue to traverse across there.
And that was his question.
The last one went through there was pretty rough.
Yeah.
That was the question when they came two meetings ago.
Correct.
Um, if we were going to block that off.
Yeah, I remember that.
Remember? And we haven't blocked it off.
No.
We've blocked off going into the field area with the gate.
Well, we'd, we'd put a, you know, road closed sign for people coming in so they know that they're not the parking entrance anymore.
It is a.
And he can still, he can still go without going through the gate.
Max, I don't know if you can get it. If you can get your.
And, and he said, his truck can do it, his wife's car can't do it, but his truck can do it. And that's all the. Let's say that the Oaks and the people want to put gravel on that, would the city have a problem with that?
Some of them bother up down the creek bed, I, I don't care, I just watch it. It just washes down eventually, yeah, I mean. No, I don't think they're.
If they want to maintain that.
And that was before the parking lot, I'll ask some water flow, maybe different, you know, it's coming to you. But I just, I just wanted to, to ask that question that if those people wanted to do something to it, or even just. But I just, I just wanted to just ask that question that if those people wanted to do something to it, or even the blade.
We don't, we're not gonna stop them from doing that.
It it was an established road and right away, city got involved.
It was established.
It's waving.
Having during a fire truck like you have, I don't know that I'd want to take a fully laid engine up that road.
No.
Because once you hit the, once you hit the creek bed. The way that it is now, I don't know that you'd make it up.
The gravel road?
No, yeah, the actual down the below road. The last time I took it, I was kind of empty taking my trucks through there, I was like, I'm gonna tear the bottom of my truck up.
I hadn't been up that.
It's it's pretty bad. Yeah, it's it's pretty bad.
So be confident of the fire truck, you know, if you're.
Absolutely, three percent.
I'd feel more comfortable coming in from the top side and making my way around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only problem with the top side, and Max mentioned the UPS drivers and all that, is not really coming off the road and. Unless you're coming back from, you know, the Huntsville side. And you gotta make that tight turn coming in, it's really coming back down that hill. Where you're trying to see traffic and you've got trees and it it's just, it's almost impossible to see, you just kind of have to. Grin your teeth and go, you know, and hope there's not somebody coming. So that's the reason I always went, like Max said, I always went down to the bottom creek and came down that way because you could see better that way.
Question, would, could we, this is not just a question for that driveway. Uh Jerry actually mentioned it coming out from behind uh Andrew, well, Scott's petroleum. Where you have to cross over and turn left. Can we not put some big mirrors that show oncoming traffic so you can see?
That would be.
I know, but we could, we could actually put a post out there, out of their right way, that'd be big enough with a mirror on it to be able to, you know, visualize. To look at the oncoming traffic on the other side, so that when you're there trying to pull out, you can see, mirror, whether there's a vehicle coming, you know, after your right inside. I mean, I think that's a good solution, why don't we look into seeing what that will cost and then maybe we put that in our street budget? I'm I'm okay with that, if you guys.
Well, I I mean.
I think that'd make it a lot safer, I agree. I'm I'm like you, pulling the dozer and coming off that hill and trying to look back in an international, trying to see if there's anybody coming, it's it's tough. So, yeah.
Church Street. You know, if you want to take. Out loud, these would want to go out.
Yeah, but you still got a lot, you still got a lot more visible space. Yeah. Alright, any anything else? I'm I'll I'll let you guys know what I find out about those, so. And again, I've already told you, we do not get the public safety equipment grant, larger cities. Alright, the CD, I think we're moving on to the CD discussion.
Yeah, I just um talked to the Fable bank today and the bridge of mine now. So he did, if we want to recover CDs, we give a four percent. Prior to that, it was only two point five. So I didn't know if we wanted to do that or what.
Are we talking about taking money out of the general fund to go into CDs? So I I'm gonna, so I think that these are things that, it's, I'm glad you're bringing it up. So I think one of the, normally I would say, yes, that's a good idea at this point, but we still have allocated funds that are out there. Um in the tune of what, hundred and?
Hundred and fifteen thousand right now. Ten show.
Up to a hundred and thirty?
Yeah.
And then the other thing that, you know, I'm gonna just bring it to the council, probably in January are some design plans to build a maintenance department behind City Hall. We're out of space. And we're gonna have to have a steel structure where we can put all this equipment that we've purchased. And that we're gonna need to purchase for the maintenance department, separate from the police department.
So you get access to cash as opposed to.
Correct.
And we may have.
And I don't know what that cost is gonna be, because I haven't actually met with an architect or an engineer to look at what the design cost will be.
Or into CD.
Yeah, you've got.
How much do we have in April that it's ours?
What's the interest rate on?
Is it five?
About five percent, so. You've got a hundred thousand in the account now, even if you take out two hundred for your stuff that's going to be, have to be paid, you're still gonna have six hundred thousand dollars.
Well, how we were looking at this going forward was. Uh not cashing in the CDs out, we've been looking at this for about a year. Part of it, uh when I started with Mayor of Stroud, was that we would always have a lease, one year revenue at his, our. Kind of a benchmark, looking at our budget where we basically have a downturn at least fifty percent, we can make that up. We have currently have that, more than that, with the general fund and with our CDs. And so instead of taking the excess of people, trying to maintain it, budget at least six hundred thousand in general fund at any given time. We're excess about two thirty, so taking that excess, but in the CD, we restrict that money for this building concept that we're looking at. We take our overages that we're running right now from twenty. Four into twenty five, taking that over to make it also restricted. We therefore have almost close to three hundred thousand dollars right now, loading costs looking at is probably between three hundred. So we can pretty much fund this without having cash in any existing CDs. They got access from the general fund, make it all restricted, it's not spent, it can always be allocated if you need to. When we have this money to be self funded and own this without interrogating any debt, without cashing in any CD, without bothering our cash net. Saying. So that kind of plan that I didn't look at.
What was the term on the four percent?
Yeah, but if we, we think about this, okay. For hundred and forty thousand, that's probably.
Matures in April.
Matures in April?
Yeah.
Okay, is there one or two?
Um, well, there's three in April, but the earliest one, I thought, maybe the other ones are forty point.
Okay, but so you, so you're gonna have all of those coming out. And in April, okay? And if we roll them over in April. You're gonna be lucky to get two percent.
Well.
If you, when you, if you roll it over. Now, so if you take and put a hundred and fifty into one CD. Now. Okay, where the rate is two point five, but they're gonna give us four percent if we do it right away.
I mean, I mean. Quite a little bit, yeah, part of my company is that I'm an investment. And I do that, that's my main duty, this accounting stuff is not really what I do anymore. It's maybe my company is actually Jacksonville, third passion, that's never my company, I do investments, bonds, charities. Uh that's what, that's what I do. The interest rate environment is actually increasing there, uh it's actually going back, uh it's actually, everybody got a spooked when we were getting the rate cuts, those have just followed down. I'm seeing some of the investments that offer my clients will get a five point five. The money market account, even in our best, uh it is a short term interest rate, I don't think you need to be looking at anything that's worth six months right now. But I think blocking for much right now, you gotta regrade it, because I think racing will come back up, plus, we don't know what the uncertainty. I understand what you're saying, but I'm just telling what's happening in the industry. Now, generally, you only talk about one bank, we talk about a local bank. As a general rule, right now, our best is offering on their money. Four point one percent, and and they're not giving you a special, this is just what they pay every day. CD says going along with right now, we're being short racing. Because they don't know what the market is. The uncertainty we have right now, we don't really know what's gonna go, so I would encourage you not to look at it and then beyond six months. I would literally encourage you not to do that for six months right now, because we don't know where they're gonna land.
Well, that's up to the council, I I just brought it up, uh I can go back and ask them for six months and see what works, but I'm not gonna waste the time if you won't.
Usually, you're gonna better turn to six months, okay, no, that's small. I think you can still probably get anywhere from four to four to half.
And but they're they're now on, they're, street offer is two and a half.
I know, but our main goal as a city is not to make interest income, that's not our goal, that's the secondary goal of saving money. Main goal for those funds there is for our safety net, not to get the best interest rate out there because we got CDs. That money is literally we use earmark for projects. Part of that project is safety net, other project is to give back to the citizens of the city, not to be worried about if we're gonna make twelve thousand, ten thousand dollars in that. I mean, that's. Our main, our main thing is not take the money.
Just just on a side note there, I mean, that's what we're hearing from Ba- Bank Fable, I just Googled it here and just looking at it, and there's not really anything that's saying, you know. Be drastically cut down to two percent, and I don't understand it, so. I don't think we're gonna be significantly harmed by, or that that's, we're not, you know. Again, it's April that um those CDs come to maturity, we're making five percent on them until April, I don't think that. Just from what I've seen here looking at, that it's gonna be actually. Two percent come April, yeah. I think that.
Far and ways low down.
And if we pull them out, we're gonna pay, you know, again, the penalty, you know, I know that the, there's kind of still, again, there's a little bit of smoke and mirrors there with interest rates, so. You know, I'll know that, I don't think we're going to incur any great loss by waiting until they mature in the trade. But I think, again, that's what I'm getting from looking.
I appreciate it, we're gonna know.
Yeah, I know, yeah, thank you, I mean, and we have actually. Like, there's actually. Five that are ensuring in April. With Bank Fable. But yeah, I think, I don't think we're gonna need any major detrimental loss.
And that's about one, five and a half.
They're they're all five percent right now.
Five percent, man.
I mean.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is the first I've heard of the building, I think. If so much Jerry's point, we gotta reinvest to take care of what we.
Exactly.
For liquidating due.
But we also have. A group of those that we have earmarked for new city hall.
Well, no.
I I think that. No. This is just our reserve. My plan for a new city hall is us to get a FEMA grant so that we can have a storm shelter at some point, we can build the city hall on top of it. But again, that's looking for grant money, and that's us being persistent about applying for grants every time we get a chance. So that's my long term plan, if everybody wants to know, that's it, I don't want to spend money out of the city budget, I want to get a grant for it, I think we can. I want to fix up what we have, and I want to make it usable so that we can do the best job we can for the citizens that pay taxes here, so.
Part of that is looking at our true financial debt worth to, uh, leverage that.
And I just want to make a comment here. Jerry donates his time to do all of this. He has helped us tremendously over the last two years to get all of this financial, you know. Budgeting and, you know, depreciations and, you know, EBITDA, all of those things that we did not have prior to this, so. I can tell you that I deeply appreciate the amount of help that he gives to us as citizens, out of his own time and energy. To get us to this point where we have this ability to make these decisions to truly help the city. So thank you for doing that and not charging us and not, you know, sending us a quarter of the bill for.
You're involved. Just put it in the lower.
Don't look south.
Okay.
So that brings us to our next item, which is the bonuses for employees. So we we neglected, I didn't even, it totally skipped me last month, we normally do that in November, but we did not. I started thinking about, we did not allocate any additional funding for for bonuses. We did do significant raises, which I think was absolutely needed for the amount of work product that our team at City Hall produce. Last year, you know, we did two thousand dollar bonuses for the full time employees and one thousand for part time employees. This year, I would like to request that you guys would authorize us out of the excess revenue that we have for the year. To be able to go ahead and give all of the full time employees one thousand dollars and the part time employees five hundred. So that would be my request, that you guys consider that as a council, because of the amount of work that these, you know, city employees do for all of us. Me included, you know, I'm a citizen that pays taxes and I think they absolutely deserve at least that much.
This is fifty percent.
It is half as much, and and partly is because we've, you know, we're trying to get their their actual salaries or wages up. Yeah.
I'll I'll make a motion to approve mayor's request for the bonuses. For thousand dollars for full time employees, five hundred dollars for part time.
Just to clarify before, you leave that, y'all ran into this before, or is this strictly employees and not elected officials? Y'all have to clarify.
We we paid.
Okay, that's okay, either way, I just.
Correct.
The half part time employees and. The main way when you clarify, we're like.
Right.
We are getting.
Right.
So, yeah, so.
Right.
That's why, I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
That's how we did it. That's how we've done it. That's my motion.
So.
So we have a motion in a second, any public comment before we vote? Okay, all those in favor? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, she carries, thank you guys very much. At this point, we have public comment for. Oh, sorry, councilman, comment.
Hi, yeah.
Yeah. Your days are coming unnumbered now.
I said that. Appreciate the clarity and what you know. Just have one comment, bear, that several constituents probably. About the grease, but. Ultimately, the only possible. So the board is told in that. Certain targets, so. So we'll see then. But if there's certainly some vulnerability between the city, must agree to it, you know, eh? So I'm usually action today, but.
It's good to know.
Out there.
Have you, have you uh, they see anything?
You know, they we they told him what the board expected them to do. He said limited rights, pretty clearly. Pretty much all the fellow, the, the, the council advised them. That will be. Answers to our demands, if we're being a business council or. You got identified.
Again.
Just for that group, city can raise this.
Okay.
It'd be, it's here, so.
Okay, that's good to know.
So he was telling you about a little bit, to fill in some of the brochure. On the side, the other side and the other loop.
Eleven.
Well, I knew we were coming, but.
I don't, yeah, you can.
That's all a good project. You have pre-ordered, they will be.
Alright, any uh public comment right now? Okay, Mike.
Two things, uh one, uh we went through this whole meeting and all walked up this beautiful, and about here. I just wanted to say here how much it is. And, um, the other thing that I would say, and I'm sure the mayor. I think we have to flip this door here so if wheelchair can get in.
You meant in the very beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, that's number one. Number two, uh, as a citizen, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the donation of all of the equipment and time that he put forth. Uh, the entire donation that you made to the city and contribution to the city, I, I wouldn't want to put a dollar because I know any equipment, the maintenance, everything that's involved, walking your equipment down here, time that you spend doing it. I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself and probably others.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment before we adjourn?
I need some dirt, buddy.
Enough where you take it from.
But I'm afraid of, because they formed up some battery after we all went dirty.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And I just want to tell the council, thank you very much for a very productive year. I think we've accomplished a huge amount this year and I appreciate all that you do and with your time, you know, contributing to the city and all the citizens that show up and, and help the city as well. So, and look forward to a very healthy and productive twenty twenty and five.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
That's the thing, though.
Yes.
I would like to express from my guys, our appreciation of you guys for what you do. Because it, it does make a difference in helping each.
Definitely.
So it's an awful one to express. Thank you for allowing me to do the exemption because it made a huge difference. So especially with our overtime budget, um, at an excess of about a hundred and twenty-eight hours. So had it not been for that, our overtime budget would have been pretty well crashed. Yep. So it did make, it did make a big difference.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Ah, adjourn.